Okay. Joe, you're running the meeting?
Yep.
Someone you want to go?
I'm gonna pass that on now.
I say we want to go. What do you think, Mike?
Let's do it.
Couple of minutes after. All right, we will commence the finance committee meeting. The main topic today will be three departments giving their budget updates. But before we get into that, I want to just talk a couple of minutes about some developments regarding the bond issue. And we had a, Patrick and I were out yesterday.
I wondered if we should wait on that only because camera has a strong interest.
Is Mary Ann coming in?
I would assume so, so I want to do that.
Do you want to, if you want?
Why don't we let?
You want to bring up a bunch of stuff first?
Yeah, let's do one of them and then we'll take a break. I mean, if you steer, we'll do the other.
So we'll start with the budget stuff and then we'll come back to the bond. So we'll start a little bit first with public properties and capital improvement. I put a little summary sheet on before I turn it over to Jerry. So you see there's forty-three employees within public properties. The majority of those are unionized. They have a budget of, the latest budget, of three million nine hundred and sixty-two thousand. And year-to-date, there's sixty-seven and a half percent spent at seventy-one point five percent. So Jerry, you're looking pretty good. You're not going to have to be coming for me supplement, it looks like.
Thanks, thank the Lord.
This is a department that does generate revenue. The largest component of that is the cable TV fee. But they generate about three point three million in revenue. And the majority of their budget goes towards payroll. And as related to that is the capital improvement, which is also managed by Jerry and Jeff. For the past few years, we've been spending a little over six hundred thousand dollars. This year it's six hundred and thirty-five thousand, which again is only fifty-six percent spent. But they don't be completely spent during the year. There's certainly enough capital needs within the county. And one of the things that these guys are going to do is I'll talk about a long-term, three-to-five-year capital plan, the major projects that are, should be on our agenda for the county in terms of future expenditures for capital improvements. And with that, I'll let Jerry take over.
So you kind of said it all, Joe.
Not really.
There is two parts to our budget, the general fund budget and the capital improvement budget. So with the handouts you've got in front of you, you know, as per your instructions, you know, we described our property, we all know that we basically oversee and maintain county, all of the county properties, maintenance requests, building updates, renovations, et cetera. We listed several of our goals for our department. Communication to our customers is big for us. A lot of you, we've all met with at your request, for your requests for renovations and updates. And we try to then schedule them through our capital improvement program. So it's very important to us to have great communication with the clients. As I mentioned, the capital improvement plan is a little bit sparse the last ten years or so. The request is going to be a little different today. So I don't, I don't expect, no, I do expect a little shock, sticker shock. But it is, it is a request. It is what we would need to do, what we should be doing since we've backed off on it for the last ten years. And that's where it gets us where we're behind. We're behind in maintenance, we're behind in big-ticket items, the big buildings, corrections, health center, et cetera, et cetera. Everybody's got a roof, everybody's got a need for an updated air conditioning or furnace. So we try to, try to do the best we can. As Joe mentioned, the bond project, which we'll get into later, that will be back on this year, the November ballot for 2016. And then another goal is to continue our facilities upgrades to, in our preventative maintenance program and try to become more efficient when we do replace equipment. So we can capture some energy savings there. And, you know, we try to do as much as we can within the budget. So with that, I'll just gloss over the fact that there is an attachment of our organizational HRE. Joe put up on the screen. Here's the department. I think I've got possibly my data unmodified. I've got four million seven thousand, you've got four million nine something. It could be the union difference, I don't know. But I got it up here, so that's about what we've got. As Joe mentioned, if you include our revenues, go to the, why don't she, the general fund that's needed, funding that's needed from the county is about seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And with the anticipated fees and revenue from cable, et cetera, bus stations, field club, it amounts to a total of a little over four million. So it's, it's pretty straightforward in the general budget for our department. The only increase is the, which was in the call letter, would be the one point five percent for the salaries. So it's virtually flat, which is what the request was of the finance committee. So I'll, I'll turn this over to Jeff on the capital project. This is, this is a really good benchmark for the five-year plan. If they had all the money, they could take them, they could do it all. It is going to be a little bit of a shock if you follow the twenty-seventeen amount. But it's what we have to request. And we don't have to speculate on what we'll get, but that'll be your decision. But we have to, from a audit standpoint, need to request what we feel we need to keep our buildings.
So basically about nine million dollars there as far as if you jump through two thousand twenty-one.
If we did it all.
Jim, what's four, this four way, that's four way?
I don't know, it's okay to say something. Jim, when you went here and I told him to delay the bond, they were going to talk about that.
Okay.
Wouldn't this be something, Joe, that you'd want to have? You know, bonding, like the schools had, if it's necessary, and we need to break that down, you know, hey, what are the capital improvements or roofs or whatever? Because otherwise we're going to have a serious problem at some point when there's absolutely a necessity for some luxury item, but you've got to do the roof, period. And you've got a million dollars worth of work.
And that, we, we looked at many roofs. There's probably six or seven roofs that they have over five years. And they are expensive. There's a lot of mechanical equipment in here for the main facility. If you want to go down west, four oh eight, which is a sub-con building in the facility, it's in need of an upgrade for mechanic electrical. And we're trying to renovate it also. Our view is to try essentially on the facility is to try to bring it up to an energy star rated facility since we are going to maintain and keep it properly forever. So that's one of our goals for the four oh eight, which is a big-ticket item.
As the generator, which building is that?
Dot com.
Next to United Way, back to United Way. Old United.
Six hundred thousand in the generator? If, how many square feet are in that building? Roughly.
Who we got?
About five stories.
Thirty-eight thousand square feet.
Yeah, because I'm wondering, a generator normally on a fifty-thousand-foot building will be somewhere close to the two, to the two-forty range. I know when they're putting them in, Cox Cable, for example, puts in the generators in some of their buildings.
We just put one in at the health center four years ago.
Yeah, now that'd be a lot bigger.
Big, big. Seven hundred and fifty feet.
Hey, you may double-check that number. I would guess way closer to it.
There's a lot of ventilation, ventilation issue. We have to comply with the current regulations, the new one probably.
And in the last year and a half, they've done some and they've been around to some. This isn't Jer, this isn't Jerry's uncle that's doing the generators.
I've got a question about, you know, dot com's a joint city-county operation. So is the city contributing any to this capital?
Under the dot com inter-local, the city basically takes care of four oh eight and the, no, the county takes care of the four oh eight building and the city takes care of everything in this complex. You know, they have their, all the equipment stuff in the basement of this building that got redone and whatever. And that is, so it's kind of split up that we do the office part and the city pays the cost to maintain the space in this building, which is the equipment.
Department of Corrections, we've talked about that in administration meetings. But I do have roofs on here and air handling units and also some chill water piping that's deteriorating. Those are the big-ticket items.
But, and for corrections, that doesn't include the seven million we've been talking about that would be in the bond?
Some of that would be, I just didn't, I didn't pull it out because I'm not sure if it's going to pass.
The moving target.
Right, moving target. The next sheet.
So PJ, can I, uh, Mike, can I?
Go ahead.
So what is the total, what is the total with this and what you've got in the bond issue with you? Because that's justified. I mean, so what's the total? What would be the total correction for this?
The bond issue is seven million.
And with all of this stuff here?
And I think we can handle a lot of this in that seven million, if not all.
The criminal justice center is in it?
Seven million for the old part of the facility, primarily plumbing.
So how much more?
But not the annex.
How much more does it increase with annex?
I don't think the plans were to do the annex.
I'm just saying, the way that, now, yeah, I'm reading for anything, but from the, if it's going to be a criminal justice bond, you might as well see what it costs to put all this in there and the criminal justice center.
That kind of goes back to the conversation that Joe was going to bring later, related to the size of the bond issue. So I guess I'd ask a couple of that. CJC building is pretty well okay. I mean, we just put in new boilers last year, marriage nutrition boilers or water heater. So we're pretty well up to date with that, seven facilities. So the Department of Corrections is just a big facility. We have the old side in the annex and they're nineteen-seventy-six vintage. And that's where we're having a lot of the problem. But this bond, if we, bond passes with the seven million dollars, we can do a lot of the work within that bond money.
Is the grand bus people involved in this at all, anywhere in this?
No.
Are you budgeting anything for it immediately?
No.
Mike?
Yes, I'm sorry, Jim.
So, you know, kind of following up on Chris's question, if I'm reading this right, you've got thirty million from the bond going into the Fitzgerald home and seven million from the bond going into corrections. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's thirty-seven million all in on the bond issue, or is there more?
There's more.
Maybe Joe, can Joe talk about what he was going to talk about before?
Just, just give me a number.
No, no, I can give you a quick update. I don't have the number yet. And the update is that Patrick and I went out to a meeting, Jerry was there and Jeff too, yesterday. And we met with the people from nine-one-one. And we were talking about the scope of the equipment for nine-one-one and kind of how it's morphing out to now growing. And a significant piece of that would be the radio equipment. That when we threw the number out of two point six million, it was just for the sheriff's office and a couple of the rural or whatever you want to call them, smaller city.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement. But now the scope is potentially increasing fairly significantly on that as where, as there's talk now that it would also encompass the rural fire districts and a significant portion for the Omaha Fire Department and even some additional spending for the Omaha Police Department, which we're still trying to get our arms around this since this was kind of new news and we didn't have real firm numbers on it. But the number, just in the course of the meeting, increased about seven million dollars.
It could go from forty to forty-seven. And if, can I throw my addition there?
Sure.
Okay. So the issue is, there's a couple of issues. This was all discussed back in two thousand fourteen prior to bond issue. Radios were not included. At that time, the thought was each jurisdiction would be responsible for purchasing upgrades to their own equipment. The city of Omaha did budget for over a million dollars for radios. However, none of the other jurisdictions or sheriff or corrections has the money to purchase equipment on their own. So the decision through all these discussions was made primarily to budget for sheriff and corrections radios. The sheriff determined that it would be important for a couple of reasons to include rural law enforcement. One, obviously so they could talk to us because they're on the same system. And if they're on, they don't have the same radio as we do, they're not going to be able to talk to us. Two, the bond issue last time failed primarily by voters up west in the rural parts, the unincorporated parts of Douglas County. If we have the support of the rural law enforcement and by extension fire, that's going to make it a heck of a lot easier to sell this bond issue to the people who voted against it last time. Then you have city fire. If we're going to be providing it to the rural fire, then the question is city fire. And there's a couple of aspects of city fire that have to do with equipment and then the stations throughout the city that they put the, put that equipment. So we are going to try to flush this out here. And we're going to be meeting Joe and I with city fire in probably early next week. Come up with a number that the county board can vet, probably around forty-seven million dollars, all directly related to the equipment piece for the county as a whole. So everybody can talk to each other. And then, like I said, the side benefit of that is we have more to do to help us sell the bond issue.
So I guess the question that springs in my mind is if we're buying radios for the Omaha City Fire Department and Police Department, how are we going to get compensated by the Omaha City of Omaha before our buying them?
Well, I understand the trade-off is their support. Well, there's, there's another way.
There's three things.
Or let me say, here, that question, how I would get compensated is that we're going to own that equipment and it's going to be amortized or depreciated over time. And so let's say this is ten years. So the potential deal we can make to them is we'll buy this upfront, but nine-one-one cost where this is going to be are reimbursed eighty-five percent by the city of Omaha. So we could say, we'll pay for it upfront, but over these ten years, we want you, it's going to be included in the operating cost of nine-one-one, that we want you to reimburse us annually eighty-five percent of that amortization cost over those ten years.
And the second and third aspect of it is, to the extent that we will need staffing in the future, additional staffing, for a variety of reasons, important reasons, we, we want the city to support that because they pay eighty-five percent of the freight. So this is kind of like, all right, we're doing this now, but you're going to have to help us out later. And B, more immediately, we want all hands on deck to sell this bond issue.
Okay. So I understand what you're saying and that holds us harmless financially. This political question, Patrick, frankly, is a separate entire question. We'll have that discussion at a different time. This begs the question of what's the lifespan of these radios?
Ten years, is it that long?
If we don't know, I mean, let's find out.
John, John, can you help out here?
Five years? Five years, probably, seven, maybe. They get, they get beat up bad.
Last round of radios were.
I'm, I'm talking about the portable radio, not the infrastructure that runs the system, but the portable.
We're talking about Motorola's ability to continue to, to maintain that in their end-of-life, quote-unquote, end-of-life, where we need to upgrade. And that's where we're at right now with end-of-life in two thousand eighteen for these radios.
Motorola's planned functional obsolescence with backing of the federal government.
They will no longer maintain them after that date.
But I think your point, is it seven years? Yeah, I think that's negotiable, what we amortize them over.
Oh, I think that, absolutely. Multiplier or whatever you want to call it. So we need to have that number, I guess. And the people who supply the equipment should have that number. And then we tailor that so that we are.
This is all kind of new news as of yesterday. So it's, we're working through this now, but we just wanted to bring an update.
But that number then becomes equal to the number that we were going to spend. I mean, seven million was what we were going to spend for radio equipment for just ourselves, right?
Eight point one, yeah.
And so this doubles that component in the passage.
Thanks. Mr. Rogers?
I want to bring the polit, political question back in because if it's money, it's politics. What type of, I'm saying, how are you going to cut this deal? How are we going to cut this deal with them? What's the?
Well, we were thinking of calling a meeting, or I think it's trying to be scheduled, where we want Marty Belik and Steve Curtis, my counterpart, their finance director, and appropriate representative from Omaha Fire Department to kind of sit down and vet this issue with them and feel them out and throw out some ideas to them. So this is all very, we haven't had any discussion with them yet.
My only thing is, fire is weak right now because they're not going to have a chief. And so you got to model. And so I just want to get an idea of who they're going to bring to this because basically I think now.
What's the name of the woman they were talking about?
Bates, Melanie Bates, do you know her?
Who works for the mayor but is a.
She used to be a firefighter.
Yeah, she works for.
Where is she going to be at? I don't mean face, but I mean the, if she doesn't put her face out here, I would not agree to it. She's going to have to get on record for a tax.
I think they will, I mean, they've got, this is a good thing.
Nah, I mean, there's a damn cheap damn. She, no, I'm just telling you right now, if they're not willing to put full throttle behind that, we should not.
Well, we'll find out. We'll find out if they're not, then we talk about.
Because, no, I mean, she can't put the chiefs out there. She has to be there with the chiefs.
The mayor?
Yes.
Well, I think so, that's right.
I mean, because if all of us don't come there, it's got to be full throttle.
And I said that's why we're going to have Marty and Steve Curtis, who are both in the mayor's cabinet. Do I should do it, are you done?
No, I, you know, I'm just telling you from, because I think if this thing fails, we, we'll never get another shot.
That's right.
I'm saying, it needs to be seven of us and then her. And, and then bring them. I, I want to look in the face and say, are you in? I don't want to tell you for your chief, tell me you in.
What else do they have in it besides the radios, anything?
Well, there's the, the stations, there's base stations at seven hospitals around town that equipment goes into that has to do with fire, emergency medical. And then you have the radios for the fire. And then you have some software for the police. Because the sheriff's software with the radios is going to be such that, that if police want to talk to them, they're going to need an upgrade to the software on the radios that they purchased with their own money. And this is all really technical stuff that Jenny and Mark Conner could speak to better than I can, but that's the kind of gist of it.
So the radios are not compatible, is that the thing?
The radios are compatible, but one, the radios are going to be end-of-life in two thousand eighteen, just like ours are. The city radios, police are newer, they are compatible. But their software that the sheriff's office is going to be using with the new radios we're going to get that are of a nature that will not be compatible with the software that the city has.
Well, why don't we get the same software the city has instead of doing this stuff with the sheriff?
Well, that's, that's something that we'll have to talk about during this meeting.
Well, I mean, really, come on, this is one of the.
I don't, I'm not.
This is a big problem between the city and the county. They all want to have their own deal. They all go out to see their own vendors and they do their own deal. And damn it, that's the bullshit, we're not doing that. So tell the sheriff, too bad, I support him on a lot of stuff, but he needs to get his crap together so that his stuff is compatible with the city. Don't expect send more money that we don't have unless he wants federal forfeiture. Don't spend money we don't have for something that we don't need to do. We don't need to do this. That's my message. Because I'll be, I'll be six to one supporting the bond issue if that kind of crap goes. Sorry to be so mad about it. I, this stuff, I've got to have my own sandboxes coming to an end. See, I'll take that for the people too. Anybody else?
Yeah, my ass is.
Fire commissioner, I'm sorry.
Go, go.
Commissioner Dura?
You have to say your.
Appreciate it. Well, I just want to say if we're expecting repayment from the departments, bear in mind there are seven volunteer fire departments in Douglas County, some of which are represented by cities, Ralston Valley, Waterloo, Bennington, some are not, Burgington, Pocket Hills. You also have Boydstown in there, but bear in mind there's two paid departments. You've also got Epley. You can't ignore their needs. And that is completely separate from Omaha. So there's a, there's nine different departments here that need to be taken into account if we're, if we're looking for them to be a part of agreements or.
That's a good point. Who's making it over that? Okay. That's a little, Mike, okay, anything else on this subject?
So, so not only, not only, but I'm assuming you all mean Bennington City Council, Bennington's mayor, Valley's mayor, Valley City Council, all these guys are coming.
Well, they're not going to necessarily come to that meeting. They're, this meeting is with the city fire because that's the big thing. We're all, who is part of the nine-one-one users group, they're all going to have to be on board. We're getting, giving them the radios, they're all going to have to champion this bond issue.
Anything else on the bond issue? So like I said, we're going to have these meetings, but it appears that we're moving up, you know, from the forty million to, you know, somewhere in the mid-forties. We don't have a firm number yet, but we're working on it. I think Chris made a really good point. I would like to see these other fire departments brought in, have a meeting like they're going to have with the others to get them on.
The last thing I've got on this is looking at the history of our bond council. And it strikes me that we need to probably do an RFP for bond council on this. Where are we on selection of bond council?
Why don't we do that?
Why not?
Why don't you?
Well, let's say, Joe. You know, I, I raise, I knew these concerns were coming. So, you know, traditionally we've talked to there at home. So I went and talked to them and said, hey, you know, there's a lot of pressure here that we absolutely need some pricing concessions on this. And so they went back and came back with a proposal to me that basically two pieces. One piece between now and the general election in November, for all the assistance they give us and working with them, it would cost five thousand dollars. And then assuming it passes in November, they would basically charge us. And then, assuming it passes in November, they would basically charge us a dollar, a dollar per thousand. So, if it were, you know, when we did this, it was gonna be a forty million dollar bond, it would be, cost us forty thousand dollars. And historically, the last few bonds we've done, they've charged us a dollar and a quarter a bond. For comparison purposes, the, on the last bond, they did for the building commission, I think it was close to the two dollars, and the one before that, it was a dollar fifty. The last bond they did for us was a dollar and a quarter, they brought it down to a dollar, so they brought it down twenty percent. And I talked to the finance people over at the city of Omaha, who, as we all know, folks a lot of debt, and when they do it, they do it for a dollar a bond. So, we're getting what I consider, we have an offer on the table at a pretty competitive rate from them right now.
Well, I don't argue that. It's just compared to what? I mean, if we were doing anything, any, any proposal for any kind of a contract, why wouldn't we put an RFP out there? I mean, they're not the only bond underwriters in the world.
Well, we, we shift back and forth. On general obligation bonds, we use Baird Home, and on revenue bonds, we use Q-Tech Rock. So, those are the two big guys in town who do it. So, I mean, there might be people, you know, and they probably, within the city of Omaha, they have to have ninety percent of the business. It's kind of a specialized thing. So, that means that if we went out, other people who would do it, and really be confident, have a lot of experience doing it, would probably be out-of-town law firms, and then, you know, that's a question for this board, is, do you wanna give the business to a, to an out-of-town firm?
That begs the question of, why would we do a no-bid contract on something this big with anyone? It's a no-bid contract if we do it this way.
Could I interject? With professional services, like architects, engineers, legal services, and this sort of thing, we don't do an RFP. We have, we would sit down and talk to them, and they'd make proposals and so forth, but there is no such thing as an RFP for professional services. And just a side note, when I was in the mayor's office, we used to have a New York bond council, and he was nice enough to take me to lunch in nineteen eighty-two, and the bill was four-hundred and fifty dollars for lunch for the two of us. In any event, he was a nice guy, and anything we wanted, we got. And so, I asked her fiddle, how come we don't use Q-Tech Rock any time of the day? Their, their building has a shadow on us and we on them, and I think it's embarrassing. So, I called a guy named John Kavanaugh, who was associated with Q-Tech Rock, and I said, John, we're gonna do business with you, and I'd like you to tell, tell people, so you get the credit for it, which he did, and he did a great job, and, and so, they were very gracious and glad to be doing the business with the city. Later on, Mike Fahey chose a Kansas City company, I don't know why he chose them, but anyway. So, I, I, it is, I think it's important, first of all, because we keep the money in town, we've got two really qualified firms, that's kinda what it comes down to, and we're not getting screwed, I think we're being treated very fairly, and I'm particularly happy with what you negotiated, it sounds good. Mr. Boarder?
Well, I, I, I think for this one in particular, because of the work that's been done on it previously, and now to be able to take off right where we are, they're familiar with it, I mean, they would hear the other meeting, they may feel a little more comfortable about where we were going. So, with this one, I feel that we should look at who we've got, and we've got, we've got a big task ahead of us.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
I, I appreciate the background on this, but I, I guess my question would be, and, you know, we've had people from Baird Home, apparently, over here, I wasn't here for the last finance committee meeting, they charged us in excess of fifteen hundred dollars to come over and talk to us on that occasion. So, it's kind of like your lunch with the guy from New York, except times three.
You're informed.
And, and yeah, it's been a long time ago, so, but they didn't even buy us lunch, I don't think. The, the point is that it would, it would seem to me that something this big, now we're pushing fifty million dollar bond issue, that it would be a best practice to just ask the bond community, I mean, and it's robust, I know that there are only two really in Omaha, but to give us bids. Why, what would be the downside of doing that? I guess I don't understand, if, if they come back and they're over and above the one that Joe outlined, that Baird Home has outlined for us, okay, but if they don't, I mean-
Well, in my view, that these kinds of companies, this kind of services are not chosen based on money alone. I mean, when you have David Kramer before, chairman of the Nebraska Republican Party in the mix, the contacts he has, all that sort of stuff, the political juice, that's worth something, that you really can't put a price tag on. And I'm not saying there are others in the community like him, but they're well-informed about what we are doing, they were with us when the last one failed, I mean, they understand the whole dynamic of the thing. And I, I mean, I'm, I don't wanna choose somebody that's gonna do it for seventy-five cents instead of a buck. I wouldn't choose it based on money, I'd choose it on their skills, and I've got a couple of good ones. I, I don't know, I mean, I, I'm not totally opposed to it, but I just don't know that we'd gain anything. I don't wanna choose somebody based on price.
I mean, I got them to come down twenty percent.
And then, I guess my question, Joe, then, would be, in 2014, when we did pretty much the same package, and they were bond council on that, what did we pay them?
Well, we, we just paid them, you know, I think, ten or twelve thousand dollars, 'cause they didn't actually do the bond underwriting. We just paid them to do everything that was involved in pulling this together, and putting it on the ballot, and making sure we were doing the appropriate filings.
Could you find out if you don't know exactly?
Sure, absolutely.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? It's a good question to ask.
Thanks.
I don't dismiss that at all. Anybody else have any comments? Okay.
Alright, so, we will move back to the budget now?
I think so.
And we were talking about the, the capital plan, and that's how we kinda got diverted, as we talked about how much of this could be potentially equipped for acting in a bond offering. And so, now, Jeff, I think there's probably some other things you wanna say about the five-year capital plan?
Um, if, I don't wanna waste everybody's time, you want to do it, but the, or the majority of things in here are mechanical equipment. And, you know, the chiller costs you hundred and six thousand dollars, we just purchased one.
Where are we on this?
Um, I'm just talking.
Oh, okay, alright.
Um, and then the infrastructure to reroute piping and clean up the piping, and, you know, it, it can be about nine hundred thousand dollar project. So, with us getting six hundred thousand, of course, we have to split years to do a project that size. And if we're not going to pay attention to those, we're going to fall further back than we are now.
And one point to keep in mind, if you finance something with a bond, you have to spend the money within, I'm pretty sure it's eighteen months. You can't, like, raise the money and keep it there for all five of these years, or, I think the money has to be spent within eighteen months.
Really? I thought it-
For three years or eighteen?
Yeah, we had a CJ say, there's a timeframe.
There is a timeframe.
That would be a, a problem on the capital improvement, so.
But with what I'm showing here today, we can survive, as we've been surviving before, but we can pay attention to these big ticket items.
Okay. Regarding that, that's, if you sell the bonds, you have to send the money, but you can hold some of the bonds back, can't you?
Well, that's, sometimes people do series A and series B for that reason.
Okay.
Yeah.
And would we be doing multiple series A, B, C?
That hasn't been contemplated yet, because, you know, when we were first talking about it, we weren't talking about doing stuff that we weren't gonna do immediately, I, basically, the first year, I'm buying radio equipment. But that's, that's an option, sure, is to do a series A and a series B.
Joe, I've got a question that's really, really off the wall, but what I was talking about with Mary Ann, and Chris DJ's busy with looking at his computer.
You guys leave it.
I know. Anybody out of my comments? I, I'm curious, and this already sounded off the wall, some heads are gonna hit the floor, but what would we, what would the cost be if we took, if nothing else, a couple questions, the priorities of this department, and financed it with property taxes, or, and/or took a big chunk of our forty million dollars and financed with property taxes? What would that cost? What would, what would happen to the mill levy? I mean, would it have to go up the-
For every ten year, we get how much?
For every, for every penny, what do we get? Is it seventy?
Three million.
Is it three million?
And we cap to that half a year, or one and a half a year, one and a half a year.
Three-point-five million.
And you get a half one year and half-
Yeah. So, I mean, we're struggling with this stuff, and I mean, the things that they're saying is, these are serious maintenance problems, they've been deferred and all the rest of it. I really think, you know, and I, under these conditions, maybe this is something we have to consider, because I don't think we can float, do everything, and say prayers that this bond issue's gonna pass, and I don't know whether you, how much you benefit from this anyway. I mean, how much would you-
The bond?
Yeah, do you benefit?
The only thing we benefit is the correct-
Correct. Yeah, well, I mean, where's this chiller go?
We have them at the house, there's probably-
I mean, no, I mean, you need a whole school of them.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we ought to seriously consider that, that's the way to back to your head, because that may be the only way we're gonna get this handled.
So, this is a total one?
You know, the whole thing about mechanical equipment and being efficient is control. And some of our buildings, some of the equipment has it, some of it doesn't, some of them tied in, some of them are not. So, if we, if we embark on our project, they're tied into the control system, so, and we've had meetings with UNFC, and they got control. One guy watching the controls at all times. You know, we don't have the luxury of doing that, barely, and we barely have all our equipment on. So, there's a lot of controls in this, in this year, just because of the software upgrade. So.
Okay, so, for, Mary Ann just pointed out to me, so, twenty seventeen, the building maintenance project totaled is one-point-eight million. So, I mean, we oughta, we oughta consider raising some of that, not all of it, to property taxes.
Increase in the levy?
I mean?
Increase in the levy?
Yeah. Or cutting extension. Or, or cutting extension. Oh, no, I didn't say that.
Was, was the alternative to put it in the bond issue? In one-point-eight?
No.
No.
So, I mean, you know, we've been deferring this stuff all along, and I, I mean, I think we need to discuss it. Doesn't mean we're gonna do it, I think, you know, discuss it. We're just starting on the budget, so who knows what's gonna happen next?
In the past, the past four or five years, we've been around the six hundred mark.
Yeah.
Capital improvements.
Yeah.
And if we went back to our sheets, from that current year, it's something, the next year is over a million, it's been consistent that way. And I just keep pushing things out first, because there's nothing else you can do.
Yeah.
But we could get caught. That's the danger.
We get caught, then we're out.
We push out. We could get caught.
You're talking about what, we hung up these two?
Well, not doing-
You're gonna get caught, it's just not the win.
Nothing goes down worse than the reserves.
You're gonna get caught, is this, you're gonna get caught, is this a match? You're gonna get caught, it's just a fact of win. I mean, do you wanna buy one more year and try to plan long-term for a budget wise, okay?
Or, or, you know, you could do a hybrid, is try and put some of it into this bond offering here, to kinda cover us for the next year or two, and then, with the idea that going forward, you know, that might potentially have to be funded by an increase in the tax levy, but we could push that out, to not have it this year.
That's a good idea, I mean, it's a good idea, I mean, if we could put some of this, legitimately put this into the public safety bond issue, we oughta consider it. But I don't think we should do what we did last time, put all our A's in that basket.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I, I guess I'd go along with Joe, if we could do that and defer a tax increase, I'm not for raising-
Neither am I.
Property taxes.
Neither am I.
And if we've got this bond issue, big bond issue going, one-point-eight million is a small percentage of the overall thing, and maybe we should talk some more about that. I am, I am against raising property taxes.
I am too.
I am totally.
Well, then, let's look at this as an option.
But I've had to vote for it before, and sometimes it's warranted, so let's keep it open mind about it.
Sure.
And it doesn't have to be the full amount.
Sure.
I think we ask them to say, okay, what is the absolute priority that you think you need and need to do, and then give us that figure, and I can't imagine we can't come, come up with something.
Good.
Maybe. But let's discuss it. Can I just say- Mr. Rogers?
I agree with you, but I'm just saying, look at where this goes. You have the vote, if you were to do this, you have the vote in June, you raise the leads, piss them off. Then you're gonna come back in November, and then ask them to do this then. I don't disagree, but you can't act, you can't do the lead thing now. And even if you do it, you can't nip and tuck it, you gotta just cut it off. And I'm just saying, I'm, you know, I voted for them to some degree, but the lineup is not good this year. When you raise it, you're gonna piss the people out west, west you're trying to get, and I don't care who you put in front of them, you're not gonna get them after that.
I don't disagree with you, but I'm not saying that we, you know, I'm saying that we are just starting the budget process, there may be places to cut, to fund this.
Okay, I'm just-
That's really what I'm thinking, more than anything else. But I, you're, you're absolutely right.
Well, the point you were saying, and I'm gonna just tell you, the low-hanging fish is, and if you're gonna do it, you gotta do it this budget year. You start, your, your, your idea, well, you mentioned that was the thought of it. When you talk about strategic plan, and you talk about the insurance, retirees can go to the exchange. You don't wanna have to do it, but the fact is, that's two-point-five right there.
They already lose that.
And if you, if you give them the time to go on the exchange, two-point-five for infrastructure is a big deal. So, I'm just saying, if you, well, you go there, you gotta, you know, make a hard call, and we're the only one that do retirees.
That's two and a half every year.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, we could have a party for the retirees on the roof, someone might fall off.
I'm not saying, but I'm saying, no, but I'm saying, I'm saying the atmosphere now, the atmosphere now is, 'cause we're gonna have to do two things, you're not gonna be able to, 'cause two-point-five is now, that's most of the cost. So, pretty much, two years, that's gonna be three-something.
Right.
So, what we're gonna have to raise it, they can go to the exchange. It's not, before, we were talking about cutting off, they didn't have anywhere to go.
That's right.
And there, I don't wanna say when it'll come, but there's gonna be a program nationally, where they're gonna try to pull all these people together, and this is a, a NACO thing that has to be approved. But even if you, even if they went exchange first, and advised you time for some other stuff, I think you, you have the talk now about the insurance piece, 'cause either way you do it, you raise it or you cut it, they're gonna be fine, and you gotta go with it.
Anybody else on this? Anybody else for property tax increases?
Well, I, I think to, with Chris's point, I mean, if you look at what, if we would take their two thousand seventeen total of one-point-eight, one million eight hundred and nineteen thousand.
Yeah.
And then, we talk, even if you, even if you do, it phases, you know, one year, do half, and then you're all, you could make it up like that. So, I think it's definitely worth pursuing for the conversations.
It's, it's an, an action we could pursue, there's no legal reason that would stop us from doing it.
And Jeff, in the meantime, I think I'd like to ask you, I know that these are all priorities, but some are more priority than other priorities, so if you can really focus on that and give us a figure that's relatively close, that would help us focus on trying to solve this immediately, well, not immediately, but first year, really. Do you have your comments or?
I just wanted to say, Joe, Jerry and Jeff, good job, you guys do a great job. I've been through a ton of public properties in the last year, a lot of times with you guys, you take the time and effort to show us and they appear to be well maintained and you got a plan for them going, going forward, good job.
Thank you, appreciate it. There's one of, one question I do wanna ask, it's one of my heartburn, uh, it's the location of the um, election commissioner's office. I see we're replacing the roof, I know it's not that much, but um, you know, this building is inadequate, it's poorly located. Um, I mean, it's one that, I mean, even if we're, we're out west in France, there are better locations out there than where it is, because you, you know, people will have to, it takes forty-five minutes to get there by bus and have to walk across God Street and all this sort of stuff, it's really a ridiculous location. And I, you know, if we sold the building, we'd have the proceeds to, you know, maybe the cocktail lounge wanna buy it. But the deal is, if we sold the building and then we'd have some cash, we could do something that was uh at a hundred and fourteenth and center, which would make a lot more sense. I don't know, just keep your mind open for that too, this is not a good location, the tech, the people who go out there to vote, uh, it's incredibly crummy, no parking, the whole thing's a mess, um, put it next to the treasurer's office out on Maple, someplace. Just bringing it up, looking to selling it, Commissioner Rogers?
It's going up, if that was to happen, you can't do it till nineteen, because basically from here until November of eighteen, they're like on full throttle. So they'll have the primary, the general, the mayor's election off there, so you can look at that.
It just gives us more time to correct, correct it, I know what you're saying. Well, Commissioner Boarder's in?
Well, go ahead, Jerry.
No, the, the good news there on the voting, we've been involved with these ballot boxes.
Yeah.
We're gonna have seven locations.
Seven.
Eight total.
Total of eight now, so, you know, a lot of people are doing the mailing and then they just, they drop it off and, so there's seven locations, so it's kinda like the old age, there are seven branches. You know? So it, I mean, it's, it's encouraging for the people that want to do it.
Very unfortunate.
And they can't get out of that.
Well, and one of the thing, I mean, you know, we have a list of all of our properties, but it might be worthwhile to like quit the election commissioner building. I mean, is it worth continually putting money into that or is it worth moving somebody someplace else and then moving them into that building? Which I know takes money, it all takes money.
Yeah.
But are we plugging money continuously into buildings that are high maintenance, that are costing us a lot of money? So, um, anyway, I just throw that out, but maybe that's another way to look at stuff.
That's, that's remarkable, thank you for saying that.
That building, that building's almost fifty years old out there.
Yeah.
One hundred and fifteen. The other thing is, the building right to the north of it, I think it'd give three or four years to sell it. And it wasn't, I said, that looks thing, anyways, you'd understand why, uh, but anyway, so let's think about what Mike's- No, that, that's a good point. And look at other options.
Yeah. And it would ideally be something near the interstate or certainly buses, that's for sure.
Buses. Would be more important than the interstate, cause then we're having to cross the interstate.
Millard's a great area.
Okay.
Yeah, the old market.
Yeah, the old market'd be great, there's some space open, I do. Up four walls. There's a condominium, I know, I would go in for sure. Uh, any other comments or any questions? Let's move on from here, you're gonna do some kind of a sharpening thing and tell us what absolutely is it? And I'm not trying to drag you down, but-
And let's find out how soon we have to use the bond.
Yeah, I'll get the final one on that.
Because the school, I'm positive, has a long deal on that, so maybe you could start the job and go through it, cause some of their projects are long projects.
Yeah.
No, this, this, this time is pretty tight.
I would never got that question.
It's, it's pretty- It's pretty tight, they're gonna, they're gonna get it done.
They're gonna spend five hundred million in a year.
Yeah, I mean, you got, right now, what's out there now with committed, what the, how they got it committed is they got the contingencies, they got the engineering stuff already done, they're doing prep work, some of that money is to buy land, they bought that, that money's gonna flow in three years. This is, this has been- That money's gonna flow with you. Well, he said, he said you gotta spend it in, in a certain amount of time.
Three years?
I thought it was three, when we-
Yeah, and that's when you said, when you said eighteen months, that's not short.
It might be, three years would be totally- I knew it was five years. But I'll tell you, to get that bond passed, it's not gonna be-
It is not, that is gonna be monumental. That's gonna be monumental.
We need groups like Jeff to help us.